All right, we'll officially go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. My name is Shawn Wilson. We'll start with introductions with my colleagues and we'll start today.
I am Judy Westra. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening. I'm Anupam Chuksedu.
Good evening, Patrick Kehoe. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Sorry, I'm sitting in a new spot. Hi, everybody. I'm Lauren Christensen. Welcome.
Hi, welcome, everyone. I'm Cheryl Picard.
Patty McQuine, thank you so much for spending Valentine's Day evening with us.
All right, Dr. Merritt?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, and thank her for being here to capture our minutes for these important meetings. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Good evening, Nick Brandon, Executive Director, Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Good evening, Kurt Ziskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening, Shante Langford, Chief Human Resource Officer.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartaney Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Engagement.
You stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get into further business, I want to turn it over to Vice President Christensen to make some remarks on behalf of the Board of Education.
Thank you, President Wilson. So, we at the Board of Education are deeply saddened by the tragedy, the tragic mass shooting that occurred at Michigan State University. Our hearts go out to the victims, their families, and the entire community. We acknowledge that there are many former PCCS students that are now MSU students that are affected by this incident. We condemn the senseless act of violence in the strongest possible terms and stand in solidarity with those affected by this tragedy. We're deeply saddened and weary from enduring yet another senseless act. We encourage our families and our students to take advantage of the supports the district can provide to help process and guide through this challenging time. We are committed to work together to create a safe and supportive learning environment for all students, and we will do everything in our power to ensure our students and staff have safe and secure places to learn, prepare, and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Christensen. Vice President Christensen. Onto Agenda and Action Item 230248, adoption of agenda approval of consent. Dr. Merritt, if you can walk us through.
Thank you, President Wilson. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have new hires for your consideration as well as leaves, resignations, and retirements. Finally, we have our teachers that have met the requirements for tenure today, so they are here for your recommendation and consideration. We have the approval of our minutes from our regular meeting that is on January 24th, 2023. And finally, we have first readings of Policies 8390, that is Animals on District Property, and 8400, School Safety Information.
Is there a motion to approve Action Item 230248?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of, I'm sorry, I move that we consider adoption of our agenda and approval of our consent agenda, Action Item 230248.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so moved by Member Kehoe, seconded by Vice President Christensen. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion carries seven zero. Ms. Langford, if you can walk us through.
All right, good evening. So, this evening, we have three new hires. When I read your name, I ask that you will stand up. Grace Eberts, who will be a language arts teacher at Pioneer Middle School. She has her BA from Michigan State University, and she's coming to us from Dearborn Public Schools. Welcome, Grace. I then have Katarison Rajuran, and I hope I didn't mess that up too bad. Are you there? Okay, all right. He will be Speech Correction at Salem and Starkweather. He has his BA from the University of Mumbai in India and his MA from India also, so welcome. And then we have Joanne Jody is her preferred name, Malborne, who will be the Director, Associate Director of Finance and Accounting in the Admin Building, and she has her accounting degree from Wash College. Welcome, Jody. So, you three will just stay for a little bit. I'll meet you in the hallway in a minute after I finish the rest of everything here. All right. So, we also have five teachers who are up for tenure this evening, so I'm just going to read through the comments from their principals. So, we have Angela Bingham, who's a classroom teacher at Byrd Elementary, and Mr. Hill writes the following. Angela Bingham joined the Byrd team this fall. During that time, she has launched the new innovation course for our students. Students have been engaging in collaborations and project-based learning in a new and exciting way. Our students are growing and showing so much excitement for the new learning opportunity that she leads with such enthusiasm. We are so happy to have her on our staff, facilitating a love of innovation for all of our Thunderbirds. It is with my pleasure to recommend her for tenure with Plymouth Canton Community School District. All right, next, we have Christopher Schamosiak. Kevin Lernard writes the following. Since starting his career as a Title I Math Interventionist at Erickson &amp; Farren in January 2018, Christopher has demonstrated strong instructional skills and an unparalleled drive and enthusiasm for challenging himself to be the best teacher he can be. In fact, his willingness to step out of his comfort zone has helped him grow into the strong teacher he is today. When the challenge of holding school during the COVID-19 global pandemic was at its highest, Christopher volunteered to move from his intervention position to teach kindergarteners online. Kids loved him as his great personality and positive nature came through the screen. Missing the daily in-person interactions with children and colleagues, he volunteered to move into his current role as a fifth-grade classroom teacher the following year. As a classroom teacher, he works closely with his grade-level team and serves as a member of Erickson's leadership team, co-chairing the PBISS community. He also co-facilitates our morning announcements and built our little library and supports students as they manage its upkeep. It's Christopher's enthusiasm, his ability to make outstanding connections with children, his drive to seek out and utilize best practices, and his calling to advocate fiercely for his students that make him an awesome, make him awesome with a capital A. It is my pleasure to give Christopher my highest recommendation for tenure. Susan Schroder, who is a Resource Room teacher at Bentley. Jan writes the following. It is my pleasure to recommend Susan Schroder for tenure. Ms. Schroder is a true champion for students and is consistently, as she consistently provides exemplary academic and social emotional support. As a special educator, Ms. Schroder is an essential member of the Bentley MTSS team. She eagerly collaborates with general and special education staff to develop intervention plans that support student growth. The Bentley community is fortunate to have Ms. Schroder as a member of our team. We then have Chelsea Schroder, who is a PBL teacher at East Middle School, and Mr. Youngless writes the following. Chelsea Schroder has been a huge asset to East Middle School. Chelsea has a passion for teaching and is easily seen by anyone that walks into her classroom. She has a talent for teaching that most teachers need years of experience to acquire. She loves what she does, and it shows. Her students respect the fact that she is a caring and compassionate in her style and delivery. In addition to being a great teacher, Chelsea is also quick to help out around the building. She helps out with various activities such as lunch duty, bus duty, and taking on the huge task of sponsoring our eighth-grade Washington, Washington, DC trip. The district should be proud to have someone like Chelsea Schroder working with students. All right, and lastly, we have Erica Shinovich, who is a math teacher at Liberty Middle School. Mr. Hunter writes the following. It is with great pleasure that I recommend Erica Shinovich for tenure with Plymouth Canton Community Schools. I have had the pleasure of hiring Mrs. Shinovich as an amazing math teacher in addition to the math team. She did not disappoint and has continued to be a student-centered teacher that is committed and passionate about her teaching. Ms. Shinovich is a team player and gives her awe to not only the students of Liberty but also among the staff. She is an amazing PLC partner and is committed to making sure best practices are at the forefront of instruction. Additionally, Ms. Shinovich is a teacher leader, serving on the staff data team. I am so glad to have Ms. Shinovich on my staff. It is with extreme confidence that I recommend her for tenure. Thank you, Ms. Shinovich, for all that you've done and will continue to do for our students. All right, and then we have one retirement to report for this evening. We have Deirdre Brady, who is the Director of Curriculum Instruction and PD. She's been with us since September 1st of 2016, and she will be retiring effective June 30th of 2023, so we wish her the best.
All right, thank you, Ms. Langford. Onto celebrating success with Secretary Sedu.
This is one of the best things as a board member. It's an honor and privilege to be doing, celebrating success this evening. As we honor an outstanding group of PCEP students who represented PCCS as participants in the University of Michigan Student Youth Dialogues on Race and Ethnicity Program. Following their involvement in this summer program, the students applied their learning and brainstormed several community action projects and created a social justice club at PCEP. They led a professional development session in August for the secondary English Language Arts and Social Studies teachers where they shared their narratives regarding their educational experiences in the district and how they've navigated these issues in the school as a result of their personal identities. The students also discussed what it means to be a diverse learner and highlighted their joy in learning, giving teachers ideas on how to connect with youth and create a community within the classroom. The team of students is currently working with Rania Hamood, our K-12 Curriculum Coordinator for Social Studies, World Languages, and Social Climate, and Student Youth Dialogues Program Advisor, to create asynchronous professional development course for teachers about current events and promoting positive learning environments for all students. PCCS is so proud to be presented by students who are using their voices to make a difference. I would like to invite Rania Hamood, the K-12 Coordinator for Social Studies, World Languages, and School Climate, and the SYD Program Advisor to the podium to share a few more things about these amazing students and the wonderful work they did.
Come on, guys. Hold on. That's it. We packed the house today for a good reason, so. We have a big group here, so if you guys want to just maybe stand around, that'd be great. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for giving us this chance here and acknowledging, celebrating these wonderful students here that are standing behind me. So, considering that it's Valentine's Day, I do have to say that each and every one of these students truly is great at making my heart full. They are an amazing group to work with, and it's truly been a pleasure. So, considering that, one of the PCCS strategic themes from the Dynamic Plan involves student-centered learning experiences, an important way to effectively identify what it looks like when it comes to student-centered experiences is to include student voice. And so, when it comes to student voice, as we all know, current education system, the one that we have in place, it mainly consists of our young people learning from the adults. However, when our students are given the chance to bring their voices to the table, what we begin to realize is that there is actually so much that we can learn from our youth. The work that has been accomplished by the Student Youth Dialogues team is a perfect example of this, and I just wanted to elaborate a little bit about it so that you have a general understanding of the great work that's been accomplished by this team. So, I am joined here today by, with Mrs. Michelle Smiley. She is also, yep, an SYD advisor. She's a high school social studies teacher at Canton High School. Together, we've had the opportunity to work closely with the students who are standing here today to create several professional development opportunities for educators in our district. The students spent countless hours meeting together. They gave up like the last few days of their summer break to come together and meet to plan for this professional development. And then, another thing I want to say is they had a vision in place, so as part of the program, they were supposed to come up with a community action project. They developed this project. They had a vision for it, and Mrs. Smiley and I kind of helped navigate this vision, but they're the ones who helped to make it happen. What impressed us the most is how courageous and determined the students were to be involved in this project, as they're very passionate to raise awareness on topics and instructional strategies which helped them become successful learners in the classroom. I think it's also safe to say that I actually learned more from them than they learned from me. It's a true statement. After each professional development session that was offered to our teachers, starting with the one on August 31st, and then we had one in November, and right now, there's one for February, 100% of our teachers who participated in the PD sessions said that they truly enjoyed the professional development. A lot of them walked away with so many great ideas and strategies that were shared by our students, and many of them even reached out to me, just sharing how much they were personally impacted by our students' voices. I'm extremely grateful and proud of the student group who stands here today. There is no doubt they're going to be going places and that they're going to continue to make many positive contributions to our community. I thank each one of them for their outstanding work and dedication to making great educators greater here at PCCS. Before we wrap up, though, I do have a few students that wanted to share a little bit about their experience. I know that the Board of Education always likes to hear from students, so in the order, I have Jacob, Lilly, Nyla, RJ, and Shreya. So, we'll start with Jacob first.
Since it's Black History Month, I want to start with a quote from Maya Angelou. People will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you make them feel. Student Youth Dialogues have opened the opportunity for us students to share the experiences and feelings of our everyday life with our educators. Through SYD, I have built relationships with people I may have never crossed paths with otherwise and formed bonds with teachers that I don't think were, that I didn't think were possible. I also want to take this time to recognize the work Ms. Hamood and Ms. Smiley have done and put into this organization for the past few years. Giving students, giving the students of our organization full creative control on the way we wanted to present our work was incredible. Making an entire professional development course is hard, but creating a professional development course that satisfies the opinions of 15 strong minds is almost impossible. But Ms. Hamood made it happen. Thank you, guys, and thank everybody for being here.
Hello. As an Arab-American Muslim, I rarely see or hear proper representation of my race and religion. As such, by taking part in the SYD program, I'm fortunate to have met these wonderful people and create a common culture with myself as well as work with these beautiful people to devote into creating change and mark our, mark our point to, to what we see fit in school. As you see, when we're in a classroom, we don't necessarily always get the chance to speak to our teachers, necessarily develop our own ideas and such. We're more so talk to, correct? And so, in being a part of this, it's given me the chance to voice my own student opinions and feel heard, and I truly appreciate that. And I just want to say that if it weren't for this group, I would not be standing here today and feeling proud as a senior about to leave, knowing that I've left my mark and excited for what is to come. Thank you.
I just want to say, first of all, that I'm very thankful to have had this opportunity and experience of participating in SYD. Not only did I get to meet so many great people and create a little family of my own at school, but I also got to make a difference in how current events and the conversation of race and ethnicity is carried in the classroom. This program is something that I wish could have been around to impact my early-on education, but I'm so glad that I get to help others in the future to feel more comfortable in the classroom. I'm gonna cry. I want to thank Ms. Hamood, who I first met as my, my principal at West Middle School. She helped me grow into such a beautiful person. I'm so glad now that I get to do something with her and really make an impact. So, thank you, and I love you.
And I would also like to thank my public speaking teacher, Ms. Sutherland, who's actually back there, because in the course of one semester, she not only gave me the confidence to public speaking and, you know, just to be here, but she gave me some skill sets that I'm gonna carry on for the rest of my life. And I just really appreciate that, like, public speaking was a class offered at PCEP.
Hey, everyone. Hope you're having a good night. My name's RJ. So, you've already heard from three of my close friends, so I'm not gonna beat around the bush too much. I just have a couple of, you know, quick things to say. So, a lot of times in school, the things we do are obviously educational-focused, but that means that a lot of the things we do, it's rare for us to get to do something real. So, I've really appreciated the opportunity to be able to create something lasting that has a lasting impact. Since the original PD course went out in August, I've already started to see micro-level changes from teacher to teacher. So, yeah, I want to thank everybody. I could not think of a better group of kids to work with, and I really want to thank Ms. Hamood and Ms. Smiley for advising us through us all. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shreya. A lot of things I wanted to say have been said, but I just wanted to go ahead and talk about my experience. So, SYD has been a really incredible experience, and I'm really grateful to be a part of this. I never thought I'd be able to talk in front of like hundreds of teachers and like really be able to share my experience. And it's been really nice to be with a team of like-minded individuals and work towards a goal of creating a safe environment at our school, and we're, you know, students are happy to be there. I also wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Hamood. I feel very, like, I know the whole team can relate to this, but we feel so safe and willing to, like, we're able to share our opinions and thoughts, and without her, we wouldn't have been able to, you know, create this whole thing. So, I'm really grateful for this opportunity, and congratulations to everyone.
Wow. Thank you all for representing PCCS in such a phenomenal way. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to present all of you, the students, with the Stars Award for Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success. So, bear with me while I read out these names. And if I mispronounce your name, please come up and correct me. Brianna Boyer. Santiago Caicedo Leal. Sorry. Please correct me.
Santiago Caicedo Leal.
Nice. Oh, my God. He said it so beautifully. This is why we need to hear their real names, so I apologize for mispronouncing them, but I'm glad they're here to correct me. Robert Dorshewitz.
Thank you.
Please correct me, because it was not accurate.
Oh, Dorshewitz, but close enough.
Addison, oh, I'm sorry. There's one more before that. Kendall Fitz.
Kendall Fitzhugh.
Addison Furlow. Jacob Jackson. Charles Kehoe. Shreya Patel. Stephanie Posa. Oh, wait, correct me.
Nyla.
Thank you. Anna Vega. Sidney Warren. Sophia Werner. And Rushi. Wow, thank you all. But we're not done. So, congratulations to all of you. In addition to celebrating these students, we would also like to take a moment to recognize the time and efforts that Rania has put forth while working with these students and finding a unique and important way to incorporate student voice in professional development. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to present Rania Hamood with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mile Award for going above and beyond to support the student group, as well as teachers and staff who benefit from this unique addition to their professional development. Congratulations.
This was not supposed to be about me. It was supposed to be about them, but I do have to say, my husband was pretty bummed we couldn't go on a date tonight. I cannot ask for a better Valentine's than this, so I just have to say that.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Nicely done. Nicely done. We are on to Board Committees, Reports in Action. First up is the President's Report. All right, President's Report. Just three, you know, main bullets to go over tonight. First, I'm excited that Dr. Merritt sent some information and recommended that I participated in navigating Board and Superintendent relations, which is great because it aligned with one of the goals that we set out this year was to strengthen the relationship between the Superintendent and the Board as a whole. So, I'll be attending that with Dr. Merritt on March 6th, and we'll come back and report to the Board on what we figured out, right? What we learned. So, excited about that. Also, just wanted to remind everyone, the Board, to provide any newsletter updates to Secretary Sedu as soon as possible, so she's working on getting out the next Board of Education newsletter. And then also, excited, and I'm gonna, who would like to give an update on the February 22nd webinar?
Go ahead, Mr. Kehoe. So, we've been talking about this at the Board level and at the Finance and Operations Committee for a while, that we need to do a better job of explaining to the community how schools are financed. You know, what is the process that we get our money? How do we spend that money? What are the things that happen around those activities? And so, we're in budget season right now, and we're gonna be sending out a community survey to, to people asking for input as part of the budget process, and we thought it would be helpful to provide some background and insight in terms of what goes into that budget and how that work occurs. So, we're gonna do this as a webinar for the first one. This will be the first of multiple ones that we do. We'll go, this will be a high-level overview of, of educational funding in the state of Michigan, including operating funds, which are basically our foundation allowance, as well as information on our capital improvements or our bond projects. And then, we'll talk a little bit about the budget process and the work that we go through, and we welcome the community to watch this and see this as a resource to be able to kind of understand the complexity that goes into this work and try to make this so that it's simple and fun for people to understand. We'll see how well we do with that.
Budgeting is fun. So, how will, where would the link be? And we're hoping to publish this tomorrow, and then there'll be a link that'll go out to everybody in the district, and there'll be a webinar link associated with that. Fantastic.
And people can sign up for that and be able to attend.
Fantastic. Thank you. All righty, that does it for the President's Report. We are going to go to policy with Member McQuine. We'll give a member Sedu's. We'll give Member Sedu some time to take photos and come back in.
So, we have not met since our last Board meeting. Our next meeting is February 28th. We meet at 5:30. We meet in the Collaboration Space, which is down this hallway, all the way to the end. We have divided up our policies, and we are, our goal is in the next four years to review every single one of them. We are starting with students. So, we have gotten a list of those out, and the committee is dividing them up. We'll also be doing anything we need to get done at the same time. But everybody's welcome to join us if you would like to. It's actually an excellent time at Policy.
Thank you. Member McCoyne, on to FNO with Treasurer Kehoe.
So, at our FNO meeting, we met last Thursday, February 9th, here in this boardroom, and we had some citizens that attended, so we're excited about that. At that time, we got a sneak peek in some of the work that we're doing at the PSEP Park regarding the new stadium and some of the additions that we're doing around the innovation space as part of that process. There's still some more work that needs to go on around that, but it is a sneak peek into some of the exciting things that are happening at PSEP. We also reviewed the approval process for the playground equipment at Isbister, which will be on the agenda this evening. We talked about the exterior sign replacements at PSEP. We reviewed the financial reports for the month of December. We talked about that community forum, I'm sorry, that community budget feedback forum that'll be going out this week. And then we discussed some of the considerations that we're doing on a Tanger RFP. So, we're looking to consider selling the Tanger building as it's not being used anymore, and whether there's an opportunity to bring some resources back in the district from that process. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, February 23rd, here in this room at 5:00 PM, and we welcome the community to attend.
Fantastic. Going back now to SPA with Secretary Sedu.
Thank you. We met February 1 at 5 o'clock, and we went through three big buckets. The first one is the Social Emotional Program Update, which was presented to us with the findings from Panorama, which is a software that's used to collect data. Students fill out a survey, and we go through the data in terms of how are we looking as a unit with, I think it was secondary and elementary, with the improvements for social emotional learning. The other bucket that we talked about was PCCS Virtual Academy, and the discussion was around proposed revisions for next school year. The team went, I believe, to Texas?
Yeah. To Dallas.
Dallas.
And saw Dallas Open School and worked with the Learning Accelerator.
And they shared some of the research that they were made aware of and some of the positives that that program had in looking at possible changes to the PCCS Virtual Academy. And the next item we looked at and discussed was Activities and Athletics Presentation, which is actually going to be discussed here as a full Board in March, but this was really a pre-discussion to get ready for that meeting. Our next meeting is going to be here in this room on March 1. I hope you all can join us.
Thank you. Student Voice in Action Committee actually met yesterday, and here to provide an update is Josh Patterson.
Hello, everyone, and Happy Valentine's Day. My name is Josh Patterson, and I'm a freshman at Plymouth and an SVA member. At yesterday's SVA committee meeting, we broke into our subcommittees. As a refresher, those include establishing meeting norms, creating our student agenda, establishing the RFP or Request for Approval Process and Timeline regarding the consultant to aid in SVA, and establishing the co-chair process and associated timeline. During our subcommittee group time, the subcommittees worked to further the agenda. First up, RFP Process/Timeline Subcommittee, they worked to determine what the consultant needs to know about SVA, what the consultant will do, and what the consultant's scope of work is. Next slide, please. Establishing meeting norms, they worked to create a list of meeting norms and create our attendance policies. Co-chair Process/Timeline Subcommittee worked to determine the good characteristics of co-chairs, how nominations would work for the co-chairs and the selection process for the co-chairs. Next slide, please. Oh, wait. Creating Student Agenda Subcommittee worked to create a poster/QR code, form subcommittees, sub-subcommittees to tackle more specific tasks. Our next meeting will be on March 13th at 6:00 PM in Canton High School, Room 201. I hope to see you there. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Josh. Yeah, shout out to all the SVA members. They're doing a great job of really working on the infrastructure, building out the infrastructure right now, which is gonna allow us to really get into, you know, into the meat of why the committee was formed, but to do it the right way in a sustainable way. So, just a lot of excitement, a lot of energy by the student members, and it's really a pleasure to watch them work. So, shout out to all the SVA members. All right. On to the Superintendent's Report with Dr. Merritt.
Thank you, President Wilson. I want to begin by recognizing our Human Resources Team under the leadership of Ms. Langford. They had an extremely successful in-person job fair this past Monday. They had, yesterday it was, yesterday. I think out of over 54 people came to the job fair. They had a chance to meet with candidates for teaching positions, along with paraprofessionals, teacher assistants, security officers, and a variety of other support staff positions. And I've heard that the efficiency in which they handled those interviews and met with the applicants, as well as the work that they did with our partner organizations, they had Durham and ABM represented there as well. I heard that it was outstanding, and it was a great first impression for our job candidates, our applicants for our new positions. So, as the districts nationwide are dealing with these staffing issues, it's really encouraging to see that there were so many people interested in joining the PCCS family and serving our students and families. So, just thank you for your leadership in that space. I always love an opportunity to brag about our students and the incredible work that they're doing within our community and at our schools. Our Black Student Union is celebrating Black History Month. This is an invitation to our community to join their presentation, Black Through the Centuries, and this is going to be a showcase of Black culture through song, dance, poetry, and more. This event will take place tomorrow night at 6:30 at Salem High School's Logan Auditorium, and that gives an opportunity for our community to take a look at the renovations inside the Salem Auditorium as well, and they're fabulous, and we thank for that, thank everyone for their commitment to the bond. The community performance will mirror similar program performances that will take place for the student body throughout the day tomorrow. I know that there are some Board members that are going to participate. The students always appreciate you coming in and seeing and experiencing this incredible work that they're doing each day, so just wanted to highlight that. Also, wanna highlight PCEP's choir. I wanna congratulate Director of Choirs, Ms. Jennifer Newman, and the PCEP Festival Singers. They took the stage at the Logan Auditorium last Saturday for a combined concert with no, none other than the Eastern Michigan University Choir. Now, that's big news. They're singing and performing with a college choir. The groups perform pieces that they prepared for their upcoming tour, not locally, but they are going to Italy. So, talk about that. Can we give it a shout out for our students? They are touring with Eastern Michigan University, and this is really, in my opinion, another outstanding example of their talent and just the quality of education and experiences that they have here at PCEP, but most importantly, the quality director in Ms. Newman and how she really stretches and develops the talent in our young people. So, we're really, really proud of them. Just for our families with our youngest learners, wanna remind all that we have our PCCS Early Childhood Open House. That's when we invite our families to get inside and take a look at the variety of childhood programs that we offer for our students. This open house will be held on Tuesday, February 21st. It's from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at Gallimore Elementary. Our families here can learn more about classes, rates, registration, and information for our two, three, and four-year-old students. Staff members will be on hand that night to also answer any questions that our families may have. Finally, I would like to give a shout out to our PHS Plymouth High School DECA and Marketing students, the quality business experience and education that students and Ms. Tyra Johnson's Advanced Marketing Classes at Plymouth High School received. They were on display recently when 11 students were named finalists in the annual Western Michigan University School of Business Sales Challenge. The challenge asked that students conduct a sales pitch to convince a mock prospective employer that they have the qualifications to work for the employer's company. Many of the students in the marketing program are also members of the PHS DECA chapter, and this prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Now, our DECA students recently completed a community outreach program that saw them raise funds for, make, and deliver blankets for seniors at Canton's Walton Wood Community. The project was a reprisal of a similar effort to support seniors, which took place during COVID lockdowns in 2020. So, we're so proud of our students and wanted to just take an opportunity to highlight their accomplishment and their service. They're just incredible human beings. So, just thank you for all of our young students.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Hey, I do wanna go back, 'cause I think as President, I should probably go to Italy. I mean, for oversight purposes. You had to give it a shot, right? All right. Next up is Finance and Operations with WPIAs, and so we have a handful of first readings and then a couple of final readings to go through tonight.
Thank you, President Wilson. First up this evening, we have the Contract Awards for Elementary Playground Equipment for our EL3 school, Isbister Elementary. Mr. Brian Gessman is here from McCarthy and Smith to give a brief presentation and introduction about the playground equipment. Mr. Gessman.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. This is a continuation from the bids that were awarded for Isbister Elementary as part of the bond program. So, again, thanks for all the district support and voter support in that program. Is there a, if you wanna scroll down for a chance? We received proposals very similar to the playground equipment that we received in the past. The district's goal, equity amongst buildings, inclusive of that, is kinda standardizing the playground equipment that's been installed thus far and in the future. So, what you see in front of you is actually a lot of the previous proposals that we received today and have been awarded, but this is in addition to. We received a proposal from Sinclair Recreation for the Game Time Equipment that are affiliated with the Omnia Partnership. So, it's a consortium proposal establishing fair rates, competitive proposals, that again, mimics what we've seen in EL1, which is the Erickson Field, Holzing Dodson Programs, as well as the Byrd, Miller, and Smith Programs. And so, here you see depicted is some examples of the playground equipment, all new playground equipment, along with new drainage and wood chips to be included as part of that. We work alongside with the principal as far as final location and placement, but again, this would complement the new forthcoming addition. There is one final proposal that we will be putting in front of you in the future. This is just for the equipment proper. In the future, we'll be bidding out the actual installation, hard bid that out, and then we'll bring that back to you guys here in the months to come for final approval. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I really like how this is inclusive and how it mentioned that you've taken the feedback from the schools that have gotten equipment into this one. So, thank you.
We also get feedback from the students as well as part of the process, so it's very much involved in making sure that we've got the right equipment to use there and that's gonna support their needs.
I just wanna add to Mr. Gessman's presentation. You know, part of this reason to split the bid, you know, for the equipment only and wait for install later, is due to supply chain issues and lead times around this equipment. So, this is something we talked about extensively at FNO. Most contractors won't hold pricing that long to basically, during that period of manufacturing, so that's the reason why we'll have to go back to bid for the installation portion of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have an approval for resolution for Bid PAC T6, E-Rate Network Cabling. We have Brian Jesse from Barton Mallow and Mark Solsur, our Director of Technology, to talk about the purchase.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. So, Bid PAC T6 is related to, again, the overall bond program, and specifically, the way that this E-Rate project works is each year, you have a window where you have to submit bids and kind of estimate, or not estimate, but basically award work that you plan to put in place over the next 18 months. And then, because it's an E-Rate bid, the district is eligible for reimbursement for a portion of those funds expended to, you know, pay for this expenditure. So, this is for the bids that have recently went out for construction, for the projects that are planned to go in place over the next 18 months, related to Isbister, Starkweather, and Pioneer Middle Schools. We bid out an estimated count for things around the PSEP athletic expansion, but since the design timeline of that didn't really align in the next 18 months, we backed that out prior to bringing something to you for award. So, as part of this bid, we met all the guidelines of the E-Rate submission, and we got four, we received four bids for the two scopes of work, and we present to you today an award of two contracts for that portion of work.
As is customary with E-Rate, what the Board has in front of them is the gross cost of the expenditure with the anticipated 50% sharing, and so, as a Board, we ask you that you award the gross amount, because you'll have to expend that amount, and then you'll receive a reimbursement back for the 50%.
Any questions? I think we're good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. You'll stay up there for just a second, and we'll talk about a memo of information on the Educational Support Center Leasing Agreement. We did go out to bid, and Mark and Brian will discuss the results of the bidding process and why we're not considering a award for bid at this time.
So, we did go out to bid. We actually, because we were, we thought we would be doing a construction project, and to qualify under E-Rate, you have to go out to bid both for a construction and a leased solution. We put that out on the street. We did get a number of bid proposals in both categories, but unfortunately, the pricing for construction was higher than we expected, and we did see some aggressive pricing on the leasing solution. So, for this short term, a five-year term, we're proposing to have a leased solution for the fiber connection at the Educational Support Center. And then we'll, we're proposing in three years to do another try through E-Rate to see if maybe we'll have more favorable pricing at that time. So, I don't know if there are questions, but our proposal is to do a lease solution for the foreseeable, and then go back out, and maybe conditions will have changed.
Does anyone have any questions? All right. I think we're good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, on a first read is the purchase of three electronic signs for the PSEP buildings, Salem, Canton, and Plymouth High Schools. Mr. Grzynski is here to present that award.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight to recommend the purchase of three exterior electronics digital display signs. The total estimated project amount is $107,002.2. The sign pricing was derived from the Sourcewell Cooperative bid. These signs follow the same design and presentation as we put up in EL1, and which will go up in EL2.
And this, like the other award, is for the electronic sign purchase only. We have a placeholder in there for the installation, but because of the lead time for the electronic signs, we need to go out with this first, and then, again, we'll bid out the installation, and we'll bring that back to you if we need to, based on the award amount.
Great. Are there any questions?
Just a note on these signs is like the ones at the elementaries. They're updated through a secure digital connection over a cellular network, so we don't have to run special wiring for this, and that's one of the things that we've seen as problems before. For example, at Plymouth High School, that wiring was compromised at some point over the last years, and the sign doesn't work. So, we've got power there just fine, but this'll make it so that we don't have to run new wiring for it. It's a relatively inexpensive option as compared to trenching all the way out to Plymouth High School's entrance.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
I really like how we are going to a standardized sign for all of our buildings. I think it's really gonna help with Mr. Brandon and his branding, and just the curb appeal.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you. Two final readings?
Yep.
Yep. So, two final readings. The first up is Action Item 230249, Consider Approval Resolution for Award for Bid Package. Package, Pioneer Middle School, Final Reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for awards for Bid Package MS1, Pioneer Middle School, Final Reading, Action Item 230249.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. As was discussed in the previous board meeting, this is a bid package for Pioneer Middle School, MS1. It is comprised of an addition and renovation projects at Pioneer Middle School to be done this summer, in the summer of 2023. On January 5th, those sealed bids were publicly opened, and at this time, we're bringing forward 26 contracts to be awarded for a total cost of $5,156,0148.18. This item, again, was presented in the first reading of the Board of Education meeting on January 24th, to be funded with the 2020 bond funds.
Questions or discussion?
Just as a reminder for this, all of these bond projects go through review at the Finance and Operations Committee meetings, they're reviewed at the schools, they're reviewed with the stakeholders that are involved, they're reviewed here as a first read as part of the process. So we really look for community input as well as stakeholder inputs through the entire cycle of these capital projects. And like with all these bond projects, we really thank the community for their support in this work.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion carries seven zero. Next up, Action Item 230250, Consider Approval of Resolution for Technology Bond Bid Package T5 Elementary AV, Final Reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for Technology Bid Package T5 Elementary AV, Final Reading, Action Item 230250.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, discussion?
So this is the, yeah, this is the large monitors that were, touchscreen monitors that are going at the elementary schools, and they're based upon feedback that we've seen through the initial elementary school programs where we looked at the different equipment. And again, like everything else, has been vetted multiple times, and we very much took into consideration feedback from the educators that are using these, as well as the students that are using these in the classroom. This will be done in three waves over the next few years as we replace the equipment as part of that process. And we're taking the old equipment out so that we can keep, we can replace any defective equipment in that meantime, so we don't have a hodgepodge of equipment at specific schools.
Any other questions? Did you have any comments? Nope, that was it. All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion carries, Action Item carries seven zero. Thank you, thank you. On to Teaching and Learning with Beth Rale.
So tonight, for your consideration, are the first reads of two new course proposals. The first one, I'm going to bring Ms. Hamood back up for with us. So the first one is a new one semester course at the middle school, and it would be a social studies elective course. And both of these courses, as we talk about them, were vetted extensively at SPA. So we spent a good amount of time at SPA, talking about the courses, talking about how these courses came into fruition, where they came from. This one specifically, we're going to continue our conversation around student voice and student input. This was a course that was raised, the interest of it was raised by students in collaboration with a middle school teacher. The team worked together to collaboratively design this course, piloted it this year, got some feedback and input, and it's called Contemporary Global Issues. It would be a middle school social studies elective course, and it helps our students really look at the lens of today's issues based on input from the students. So as they work through various issues, we really look at GALE and how we balance viewpoints of issues. So it also teaches a lot of information literacy for students. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hamood just to say a couple of things about the course, and then we'll answer any questions that you might have in this first reading of the course.
Hello again. So this course, going back to what Beth Rale mentioned, it was created based on a lot of student feedback that we got from our students, middle school students. Social studies tends to, I don't want to say it's like a dry subject, but a lot of our students don't always say social studies is their favorite subject. And so what we wanted to do is try to make our students more engaged and also more aware of the globe and understand that a lot of the problems that are happening around the world impact us, either directly or indirectly. And so there were a lot of students who came to Mrs. Kristy Burgess, who is the teacher currently piloting the course right now, and kind of like begged and pleaded, like, is there a way for us to create some type of an elective where we can actually go in depth and talk about a lot of the topics that are covered in social studies? Because what tends to happen is teachers, they do cover lots of topics in social studies, but they're kind of set with the curriculum, and they're kind of at a time crunch where they have to meet a lot of standards within a school year. And so this course allows the teachers the opportunity to actually go in depth on a lot of the topics. Some of them are current events, and then also things that are happening around the world. For example, like, some of these would be like the water crisis, there's also like gender inequality around the world. Like, for example, the rights of a woman here in the United States is very different than the rights in a country like Afghanistan. So this would bring global awareness to our students. And you think of our students, like, we want our students to be innovative. So when they leave us, a lot of our students actually work abroad, and this would help them connect with a lot of the things that are happening in countries around the world and not just so secluded with what's happening here in our country. And I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
You may have mentioned this in the introduction, but I was reading this and may have missed it. What does GALE in context mean?
So this is a resource that's provided, and so one of the very first topics that's covered in this course is media literacy. So it's really important for our students to understand that there's bias in all the media that they're going to encounter. So GALE in context is a resource where there's unbiased materials that are provided to our students and our teachers. So as opposed to just going on Google and searching for information, because as we all know, when we do this, we're going to encounter information that has bias. So by utilizing GALE in context, the information has pretty much been already vetted so that it's unbiased, and it's a great go-to resource for our students and our teachers, making sure that the information that they're discovering, that they're learning, exploring, these are like facts.
Online database, right?
Correct. It's an online database. It's all online, yes. So we would provide a license for every single teacher, and this would allow every student to be able to access the resource.
Thank you. We've been dealing with so many acronyms up here, and I'm like, is GALE an acronym? Or is it the name of the resource?
Yes, they have several different parts of the resource, GALE. So like, the one that we are proposing for this course is GALE in Context Global Issues, so specific for this course, where students are able to research a lot of information regarding the global issues that they'll be covering.
For explaining that to me.
Absolutely.
Additional questions?
If you can't hear me, I just want to know, is there, will parents be able to access a lot of this? Because it's online, I mean, accessing these resources that like for the class, like if they're given an assignment and to look up certain news articles and stuff.
So it's accessible by students. But I mean, if like a student is home and wanted to share with a parent, yes, they can absolutely do that. So this is a resource, each student will be given like a license to be able to research both in school and at home.
Okay, another question?
Yes.
Is there going to be like a way to control like as far as the age appropriateness of like different articles and subject matters that they're going to be?
So that's going to be based on the topic. So all the topics that have been selected are age appropriate for middle schoolers, so eighth graders in particular. So they won't be covering topics that are, like for a mature audience.
Okay, yes. And then the other thing, is it possible to get, for us to see that, the curriculum or the actual itinerary?
We can definitely provide, just a overview of like the different, yes. Yes, an overview of like the topics that will be covered. And the teacher who's currently piloting it, she did put together the curriculum over the summer, and then this summer, last summer I should say, this summer, we're bringing the team of teachers who will be teaching the course in all five middle schools, making sure that they're trained with professional development, and they'll have an opportunity to actually dig into these new resources.
And sorry, a lot of questions on this.
No worries.
And what is the open, is it open education resources? I was trying to look into see what that, is that put out by UNESCO or is that put out by Harvard?
Open educational resources are free and openly licensed resources that our teachers can use, that are collaboratively created with teachers across the nation. And then we can, we, the license allows us to customize them for the use of our students. So we can layer on additional supports for students who, you know, based on literacy levels, we can add in some additional resources for multiple resources. For example, our students who are English learners, we can do them in different languages as opposed to copyright written resources that we can't change, make copies of, or any of those types of things. Also, I want to share that what we will do is we'll bring the course description back through SPA so that the, because that's the, that's the way we generally bring our curriculum resources through. So we'll bring that to the next, to one of the next SPA meetings, so it can be seen there.
Okay, and is it, well, kids, if they want to use a different resource, are they going to be able to do that, or is it limited to what the class course has?
So one of the goals of this course is again, like going back to that media literacy, to make sure that students are using reliable data, like reliable sources. I mean, kids can, they're free to Google search whatever they want, but when it comes to doing research for this particular course and the topics, the teacher is going to guide the students to actually use the resources that are approved.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this is an elective course, so students sign up for this.
Correct, yes. And today, I was actually at Pioneer Middle School, recording a few students just sharing some thoughts about the course and going through it. And the teacher who's piloting it, Kristy Burgess, she also surveyed the students, and every single student in her class found the course to be helpful and engaging. So like, I'll be sharing that data in a slideshow with all the seventh grade teachers who will share it with their students to try to increase awareness that this is going to be a new course offered, once it's approved by the Board of Education.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And if approved, because we'll bring it for a final reading at the next meeting, it would be in the fall of 2023, 24, and beyond. And then you'll see here in the memo, the cost for the course, which is the cost of the five years' worth of licenses for five middle schools. So all in total, the cost of materials and resources would be $22,500. So we'll bring that back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other course that is here for your first read consideration is a course that has been working its way through our system for quite some time, based on CTE, so Career and Tech Education Programs. We're always looking to increase non-traditional representation in CTE programs. And one that was brought forward by female students at PSEP was the request for a female specific, now this would not be limited to only females, so I just want to say that right up front, a female-specific course in the automotive field. So the course name is Empowering Women in Automotive Technology, and what it is aimed at is helping our young women, and any young men also, that might be interested in this. But I'll say that there is a parallel course that runs right now that tends to be heavily male. Most of the students that take our current automotive technology course are male students. So this is really designed for car owners. So if our young people are planning to own a car in their future, it helps them understand all of the mechanical systems of, excuse me, of a car, how to change your oil, how to do brakes, how to do all those different maintenance things that we all probably wish we would have learned how to do when we were in school, so we could have saved a lot of money over our lifetimes. But this is what this course is designed for. And the course in the, would be, if approved, would be in the 23, 24 school year. There are no general fund costs for this course because it would be paid for out of career and tech ed and cost. And I added a little note on here based on some conversations that we had in SPA about how does CTE funding work? So we have a couple of different kind of pots of money for career and tech ed programs. One is federal money called Perkins Grants. The second is called Section 61A of the State School Aid Act, and often there's what's called added cost funds, and that's what the funding source would be for this. So it wouldn't impact the general fund, we would use CTE funding for it. So I'll pause there for any questions you might have on the course, and then, kind of go from there. So go ahead.
Not a question. Maybe it's just user error. The memo that I'm looking at, the hyperlinks are not clickable, where it says, it's blue, Perkins Five, and then Section 61, those are blue, but they're not clickable.
Okay.
If you could send those to us?
Yep, I will update that memo. It may be when it was PDFed, that they didn't come across, so for sure.
Beth, when we think about this, this program, I understand we definitely want to encourage women to take this process, but these topics are topics that'd be valuable for all students.
Correct, yep.
So I guess my question is, how do we make it so that there isn't a stigma attached with this, either this course, to have other people take it that are not women, and conversely have the parallel course that we have that is predominantly men, not be stigmatized so that women feel comfortable taking that class?
This is why this course has taken a long time to get here, because in 2019, this course started working through the process. It had a different name at that time, and through the process, a lot of conversation around this course for that very reason. It's come back around again, lifted by our female students. We work really hard to de-stigmatize all of our programming. However, there is, you know, and Mr. Licky is the one that has been working really hard to make sure that everyone feels welcome in the auto, in our auto bays, in our shop, all of that. It continues to be lifted by female students. So for that reason, we're bringing it forward at this time. It's been a long process, we've really worked hard to do all of those things. Additionally, there is a focus in career and tech ed specifically for non-traditional programs in different career fields, and this one aligns directly with those non-traditional programming needs, so there's also some additional funding in those areas.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for giving me that context, and we'd love to see the enrollment numbers and the success of this program.
Additional questions?
I have one. So if students take this class or the parallel one, is that like a prerequisite almost if they want to take additional classes?
They can take additional classes. I'm not sure that it's required for any additional classes, but I can get that answer. Mrs. Barbie was going to be here tonight, but unfortunately, she couldn't make it, so she was going to be able to answer a little more depth of questions, but I can circle back around and board notes on that.
So is the thought, if you can get more students interested in the basic class, then if you could get children as a block to sign up for the next one, it would maybe increase enrollment?
Yeah, it's definitely always a goal to increase enrollment in all of our programming. This one specifically is a very popular class at PSEP. So the current auto service and maintenance, so it's just about increasing all of our opportunities for young people.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. So I know you mentioned there's a parallel course that has very similar curriculum. Can you explain how this is different, or is it really, is the title really what's attracting the female audience? And then I have a follow-up question.
It is the same curriculum with a title that helps attract a more diverse audience.
Sure. And then I wonder too, just in terms of de-stigmatizing the program, you know, are there opportunities where we can expose students when, you know, maybe at the middle school level when they're touring the park, looking through that course catalog, really exposing diverse, maybe non-male students to those types of programs more actively?
Yeah, we will continually work on transitions, that it's one of the focus areas in teaching and learning right now, is looking at transitions, looking at better ways to help all of our students understand all of the opportunities available to them. So it's definitely an area of extreme focus for us.
On a related subject, do we have other classes that have an inherent gender bias to them that we, I mean, the one thing that really struck me is what you said, is that the women at the park said, this is a program we want. And I think that that student-centered approach is really key to what we're doing here. Do we have that in other areas?
I think that there's been, I don't think, I know there's been a lot of work done around all of, all of our programming, as we, as we also partner with some of our post-secondary partners as well. For example, often in times, in past times, welding was often seen as a predominantly male, a male profession, and the school craft, our dual enrollment connection with school craft around that, they're exalted, teacher in welding is female. And so we work really hard to help all young people see representation of all genders, all ethnicities, you know, everyone across all of the systems so that they can see themselves in any career.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I had a question. So part of what was stated in the thing was that the women, that they, the concern was that they feel intimidated in an environment, you know, because it was historically predominantly male. So I was just wondering, as that is an issue here, there are other So I was just wondering, as, as that is an issue here, there are other areas that, I mean, it seems inconsistent to the way we, and I hate to bring it up, but our bathroom situation with, when, when you can have male bodies in a bathroom, and women are uncomfortable with that. To me, the locker rooms and bathrooms seem to be more of a uncomfortable situation than like a class. So I, I just wanted to point that out, that the inconsistency of, we're, we're caring about what females think, but we're deciding on what areas those females are uncomfortable or not uncomfortable. And there's, there's, there is a body of students that are not comfortable with that. And we say we represent all students, we really don't.
So I just want to restrict the, the comments and questions to the agenda topic.
Yeah.
Because if, so if you want to, it's not, if, if you want to bring up that issue, I would just recommend you send a request to myself and the superintendent to put an agenda item.
I was just correlating the issue.
Yeah. Are there other questions?
I just wanted to say, I'm on the SPA committee, and both of these courses have generated a lot of discussion in committee. And I want to thank both Mrs. Mood and, and Mrs. Rayle for all their hard work. I'm really excited by both of these classes.
And just to add to that, we have three parents on that committee. So we have community, and all of these discussions, like I said, are in the open. We invite everyone from the public to join us for any of these meetings, whether it's finance and operations, or student performance and achievement. We'd love your input. This has gone through multiple discussions, as Beth said, for many, many years. So it's, I think it's made its way up.
Perfect. With parents and students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Fantastic. All right, on to citizens' comments. First up is Rachel Clark. And just as a reminder, Ms. Clark, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Clark, a kindergarten PCCS parent and graduate of Plymouth Canton, 2004. I'm a part of a growing group of community members concerned about our stagnant and mediocre literacy proficiency scores in the district, and the resistance of administration to develop a comprehensive, timely plan to invest in our teachers and change the literacy curriculum and instruction. As this group knows, based on our MCE scores, 37% of our third graders are not reading proficiently, and 59% of our black third graders are not reading proficiently. The scores have been consistent at that level for the last five years. Michigan is ranked 42nd in the U.S. for third grade literacy proficiency, and comparing our scores to neighboring districts is nothing to cheer about. The United States is in a literacy crisis, and stack ranking our district against other flaming districts across the country, as the NWEA scores do, is acceptable. We are not satisfied with hovering in the 60th percentile. Schools across the country are making significant changes, and we need to as well. Improving elementary literacy proficiency through the science of reading and the structured literacy approach must be a critical piece for the district to realize its strategic There is a solution and a better way. This is not a time to be frugal, waste time, or take shortcuts. We agree that it's the community's responsibility to help all students succeed. We are asking that the administration take steps to improve literacy proficiency and create more equity. The steps we would like are the following. One, provide elementary teachers with comprehensive structured literacy and professional development based on the science of reading, to enable them to implement instruction and curriculum directly into the classroom. Two, implement structured literacy and curriculum based on the science of reading. And three, change the literacy assessment to better support identifying dyslexia and support learning readers. We have started to discuss our concerns with several members of the administration, and will continue to work together to drive change we believe is necessary for all students and our community to reestablish PCCS as an academic leader. We believe the Board and the community must understand the details, severity of the problem, and magnitude of the community's concerns. Following me are three additional speakers that are here to share their experiences, concerns, and request action.
Thank you. Next up is Evelyn Somar River. Somar River, thank you.
Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity. I had something prepared, but I think I'm just gonna go wing it a little bit. So for those of you that haven't really been following how kids learn to read, I think we just sort of assumed our teachers teach it, kids pick it up, magically they learn to read. When most of us learned to read, there was probably a lot of phonics used, and you sound things out, and you break a word apart, that's called decoding. But then there became this whole language movement. So rather than going from the bottom up with the letters and the sounds, and working up to words, they just started giving kids words, sort of a top-down approach. And that's been popular for quite a long time. Then it became something called balanced literacy, which was kind of somewhere in between, where they sprinkled in a little phonics, but it was still a lot of whole language learning. And we're still getting, that's what our district uses, is something called balanced literacy. And there's a lot of science, prominent neuroscientists who have studied how kids learn to read, and that's not how kids learn to read. Kids need a very systemic and explicit instruction, starting with letter sounds, building that into words, so they can then start to read. We've all noticed that there's a lack in the way that our kids are taught to read. I started to notice this with my first grader, because his teacher said he just wasn't catching up, he wasn't learning as quickly. She was trying to work more, but he was doing a lot of guessing, wasn't reading through all the sounds. And he was frustrated. He wasn't enjoying school, he would tell me that he thought he was stupid. He knew he was behind, and we didn't know why. So we did KUMON, we did reading intervention at school, we took him and got him evaluated. It turns out he has dyslexia. And that was like the light bulb. We took him to Brain Spring, he's been doing tutoring there, and within a couple months, he was a changed kid. It was like he had cracked the code, reading was no longer a mystery, and he felt confident again that he could figure things out. And I know a lot of you are thinking, well, your son has dyslexia, that's only a few students. But it's 10 to 20% of students can have dyslexia. It's a lot of kids. And furthermore, teaching kids this systematic and explicit way of reading, it doesn't leave out any students, it catches all students, especially those kids who, who could be struggling readers. Only about 30% of kids learn with that sort of like top-down approach, or just sort of a, a non-phonemic-based approach. That means 70% of kids need this way of teaching. And I've talked to a lot of parents, not parents with kids who have dyslexia, but just parents in general, their kids aren't learning to read, and they're frustrated, and they don't know why. And we really, I just encourage you guys to read about it, to do your own research, to understand this science of reading, and why we need balanced literacy. And just please talk to your administrators and try to work together, because we're behind, and we need to get caught up.
Thank you. All right, Katie Mills-Espere.
Hi, everyone. My name is Katie Esper, parent to a kindergartner and first grader in the district, also a graduate of PCCS, class of 2004. I was excited to offer my children a similarly excellent and wholesome school experience during their youth. Our first year and a half have been amazing. We adore our teachers, the school, our community. We do the recommended readings in our book bags most evenings alongside other books. We, the NWA scores are both in 90th percentile, and feedback from teachers couldn't be more positive. They're picking it up quick, and my kids are both reading. I feel really proud of them. Two months ago, I overheard a conversation about literacy, and a specific podcast about the science of reading, at a family holiday party. It piqued my interest, but at this point, only because of my mother's reaction. This is still going on? I was hooked from the first episode and kept thinking, this must be embellished for dramatic effect. Could this be happening in our district? Without a formal background in education, I did a bit of research, spoke to people in the community, district educators, teachers, parents, most importantly, started paying closer attention to my children when they were reading. Here's what I learned. Number one, the reading my kids were doing wasn't really reading to the extent I thought they were. They were mostly guessing and memorizing. Number two, there's so many parents out there like myself, who think their kids are at the top of their class, learning to read. Number three, also like myself, most parents didn't really think twice about how kids were learning to read, and think to investigate the type of instruction or curriculum. And the fourth thing I learned is that my very own parents addressed the Board of Education multiple times, starting in 1992, when the whole, when whole language transitioned to balanced literacy, with similar concerns that we, as a parent community, have today. While some of the stories from 30 years ago were entertaining, it's been a bit terrifying, reading letters written to the Board 30 years ago, that could have been written verbatim by families in our district today. Written by my father, Jim Mills, and addressed to the Board on October 22nd, 1992, I quote, "Our daughter's reading skills have not developed as they should. She loved books at an early age, we read to her, and she read to us. By kindergarten, she was described as an advanced reader. These skills have not developed at an appreciable rate in school. If you could see what the first part of our daughter's fourth grade year has done to her confidence, you would know that this is now a failure. It's now easy to see these last few years of her education have not provided her with methods, processes, techniques, to learn what she now desperately needs," end quote. For all our community, in support of our teachers, and especially for our children who all have the right to read, I'm asking that we make a change now. Thank you.
My name is Shannon Perry. I'm a graduate of PCCS as well, class of 2014. Younger sisters to all of the people out there. I'm a concerned citizen and an aunt to five children in the district right now. I am here to read an anonymous letter from a PCCS teacher, beginning now. I am writing to let you know that PCCS can and should provide better literacy instruction in our elementary schools. I wish I could be there in person to make this statement. But there is a culture of fear and intimidation that is being created by some leaders in our district when it comes to discussing anything about our ELA curriculum. Our teachers deserve better than the training and curriculum that we've been given. Most K through 1 teachers are confused and unsure of how to proceed. Last year, kindergarten teachers were given David Hill Patrick's Equipped for Success book, an ABC poster, and each building received a box of black and white decodable readers. This was the extent of training we received on the science of reading. At the start of the year, a similar situation occurred with our first grade teachers. Simply buying teachers a book, or requiring them to watch a pre-recorded webinar about the book without any discussion, being taught how to implement it in their classrooms, or being given the resources needed to actually implement phonemic awareness and phonics into our classrooms is not good for anyone. The instructional coaches aren't helping teachers understand and implement current research and practices into our classrooms. As instructed by leadership, they still coach us to administer the BAS, use leveled readers with small groups, and use the workshops model, which does not provide adequate time for explicit instruction. Every teacher I have ever met wants to do what is best for the kids, and goes above and beyond on a daily basis to provide the best possible literacy instruction for their students. Unfortunately, our leadership has been resistant to change and resistant to listening to the teachers who have raised concerns and asked questions, as research on literacy has taken a new turn. Many of us enrolled in letters training sponsored by the Michigan Department of Ed, giving hours of our own unpaid time and energy over a span of two years, to learn how to best teach our students to be proficient readers and writers. Most of what is being taught in letters simply sharply contradicts what is happening in the PCCS classrooms today. Many of us are relieved that parents in our district have questioned the instruction and curriculum and decided to advocate for our students. The parents can bring it to the attention of the public and all of you, without any repercussions. The parents can bring it to the, excuse me, I apologize. They want what is best for all students. Literacy is an issue of equity. Our students and teachers, our students deserve teachers who are trained in best practices, given high-quality instructional materials and assessments, and leadership who wants to work with teachers to best support their students. Teachers are not being given what we need, which in turn means our students are not being given what they need. Thank you.
Last up, Janet Sutherland.
My name is Janet Sutherland. I've been teaching for 36 years, 34 have been at the Park in public speaking and video production. For over 35 years, a dedicated class in speech and presentation has been a graduation requirement. This past month, the Curriculum and Instruction Department made a decision to effectively remove the need to enroll in a dedicated speaking class. The Board approved four-year-long classes, and in them, the Teaching and Learning Department included the speech credit. The students in these classes will not have dedicated instruction, practice, and guidance in speech. This decision was made without input from the English Department. Previously, the department voted to keep a designated class. A precedent was used from 10 years ago, when the English Department voted to let AP and Honors students receive the credit for speech in a year-long honors English course. At this time, this decision impacted only 10% of a graduating class. Now possibly 80 to 90% of a graduating class will no longer have a dedicated speech class, potentially 80% of our graduates have the state minimum experience in presentation and speaking. Over the years, I have received feedback from many students about how a dedicated speech class has changed their lives. Students in the workforce who have had the confidence to interact with customers, students at service academies who felt better prepared than their fellow cadets, college students who participated in group on, group interviews, who came out on top because they believed their high school speech class put them in a place to speak confidently and clearly. I have also had anxiety-ridden students who now feel confident enough to take on careers that involve speaking every day. In one decision made at the 11th hour before the scheduling materials were published, teaching and learning erased this experience for most students. While the speech classes may still be on the books, most students will not elect, will not elect them. Does this community want students who have dedicated instruction and practice taught by instructors who model these skills? The Resource Textbook for the Speech Classes, The Art of Public Speaking, has over 450 pages of lessons, samples, and exercises, that this depth and rigor will not be covered in year-long reading and writing classes. In a survey released in 2018, executives and hiring managers said that good communication skills are the number-one thing they want from job candidates. It outranked others that get far more public attention. CBS News had a feature that referred to public speaking as the number-one work skill employees need. We were proud as a district to lead in this for almost 40 years. Articles from Pew Research and Education Week both indicate that the number of students who suffer from anxiety is rising. Having a class where they can overcome their fears of speaking and develop skills to express themselves is one step on their journey to success. I implore you to please send an email to 6,000 students and parents to indicate that an error was made in the curriculum guide. I implore you to look at your own PCCS learner profile that you approved and realize how a dedicated speech course is an integral part of developing the student. I implore you to require a dedicated speaking class. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who shared their comments this evening. All right, on to action items. So we have a couple of discussion items. The first one is consider approval, action item 230251, consider approval to amend the Superintendent Evaluation Committee charge to include review of the superintendent contract. So this would be the first and the final reading. Ultimately, two things are driving this. First, we know that the superintendent evaluation dates, and when we have to have them done by, and what's in the contract are not aligned. We've talked about this for some time. So every year, we pretty much have to, to do an amendment to the contract. But in order to make any changes to the contract, we have to actually empower the evaluation committee in order to look at the contract. So that's kind of the first piece. And then the second piece is, you know, it's just prudent to every X amount of years to review the contract as a whole. So ultimately, what this action item is, is this is giving the evaluation committee, which currently is made up of myself, Member Keough, and Member Sedu, basically giving the, the charge to that committee to review the superintendent contract. And then also, before the, the vote discussion, just as I fly, I'll, I guess, I guess it'd be a separate part of this, because then as president, I'll actually be replacing myself on that evaluation committee with Member McCoyn. So I just want to kind of lay out the full scope before the, before the, before the vote. So before we move for an action item, or move for a motion on it, is there any discussion on it? I'm sorry, got to move on it first. So is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval to amend the Superintendent Evaluation Committee charge to include a review of the superintendent contract. This will be a first and a final reading. The action item will be 230251.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion questions?
I just wanted to mention that we will also be aligning our policy with the correct dates. Because right now, they are not the same. And taking out the verbiage of the policy that no longer applies. So it's nice, one nice tidy, tidy package.
Hence why I've asked Member McCoyn to replace me on the evaluation, because of the linkage to the policy committee. the linkage to the policy committee, so.
I have another question.
Yes.
So, is that just, because I haven't done this before, so you're just asking for the committee to have this ability to read?
Correct.
And do we get any information?
Yeah, so, good question. So, ultimately, this committee will be, will now have the charge to review the contract, the superintendent contract, and then they would need to bring any recommended changes to the full board.
Okay.
Yeah, for the full board to vote. So, they're basically doing the work. And then they bring back the recommendations to the full board.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries seven-zero. And then also, once again, just as an official act of appointment, I'm going to ask member McCoyn to replace me on the evaluation committee. Thank you. Thank you for your service. And then, keeping with the theme of member McCoyn, an update on the mascot committee update, please.
So, member Sedu and member Kehoe and I met tonight. And for people who are, who remember or don't, there was a call to the community to send an application to be part of the committee. And that window closed February first, so we got applications from students and from adult community members, and we reviewed those and chose a committee. We had five students who sent in materials and we're going to offer all of those students a spot on the committee. And then there were eight adults, one who currently does not live within the state. And so, we have two parents who will be joining the committee and then four community members. And we will be notifying those people tomorrow. And then Dr. Merritt will be rounding out the committee by choosing administrators and staff who will be on it.
Fantastic. Any questions for member McCoyn?
Yes. Will we be able to see tomorrow then who was chosen then? Like, how will we know?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
Huh?
I couldn't hear the question.
Oh, sorry. Well, we, well, how will we get information on that as a board?
So, after I notify people and make sure they accept, I'll send it out.
Okay, thank you.
Fantastic. All right, any other discussion? All right, so then on to follow-up board questions. And we have a list here. Superintendent Merritt, do you want to walk us through?
All right, the first question, and we may need further clarification. It was an ask to be provided with turnover rates for staff members for the last five years as a follow-up to the staffing report. So, I had the five years, but I don't know, did that specifically have the turnover rates? Were you able to? Is that something you're going to be able to get, Ms. Langford?
We're trying. It's hard to pull that data. So, I gave you what I could get in a timely fashion for now, but yeah.
So, can we expect that maybe in two weeks?
If we can pull it. Like, we're having a problem pulling the data from the system. Like, I don't know if we'll be able to get it. So, we're going to work with Jonathan again, too, to see if he can assist.
So, I suggest we keep this on as outstanding.
And for the community, Jonathan means Jonathan Flukes, who is our Director of Data Assessment, Research, and Evaluation.
Next question was member Kehoe asking for substitute fill rates for the last four to five years. That was provided in the board notes on two-three.
Yep, and my, we were cheering the rates that we have right now of about over ninety percent. I'm like, that didn't seem like very high, but against the history, that's a, that's a quite impressive number. So, thank you.
The next one, I believe we have accounted for, I'm going to suggest that we could take that off, is the Grow Your Own, to include that in the upcoming budget process. So, that will be included in the process. And I did share earlier, within our own Grow Your Own program, we had twenty-two current paraeducators who have applied to be a part of or be considered for Grow Your Own, where we would partner with Schoolcraft College and assist in getting teacher certification. So, kind of excited about that. The final one was a sixty-four open staff position, support staff positions that were noted in the staffing report, and we wanted to know how many of those openings were in special education. And you are provided with that breakdown in the two-three board notes.
Yep. Great. Any new follow-up questions from this evening?
I didn't catch any.
I caught one. Member Burkhart wanted a overview of topics being covered in the contemporary global class.
Did anyone catch any?
I have one just comment. And that the community budget feedback form was issued and it's out for the community. It's on our website, and we are requesting that it be completed and come back to us on February the twenty-fourth by four P.M., please and thank you.
And this wasn't a question, but it was about ensuring that we hyperlink the funding sources in the memo for empowering women in automotive technology.
Thank you.
What would we do without you guys? Amazing, thank you. Anything else?
A quick question. Will that be emailed out to families? That link for the survey?
We'll be distributing it in a number of ways.
Can we email it out to families?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Does it have to be related? Can I bring a question from last week or last meeting or?
From last meeting.
Yeah, it's one of my concerns.
So, traditionally, what we would do is do it in advance versus at the meeting. So, if you could, you know, send an email.
Okay.
Yep, and then we can address it.
Yep, no problem.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, well, we will go ahead and adjourn at eight-thirty-six, which is a little early. Any of those with spouses, you're welcome.
Fantastic. So, I'm thanking you for being president.